I hollered at him. I'm wondering if he's been in here.
I think he is.
Rick Bush!
There we do go. See, where's she at?
Where?
Where's Rick at?
I don't know. I looked outside and didn't see him.
Go over there and tell him he's in there. Settle down.
He must've had something he had to take care of.
That just means you can't go first.
You what?
It just means you can't go first.
Alright, anybody have any questions about minutes from last month's meeting?
I got a phone call that was searching the shoe and another day it was on the Christmas lights and the outlets and stuff. And I told her that neither part due and he's waiting on the answer for them.
Who called him? I called him.
Yeah, I said, "You called right after we did get message from Becky Farmer about..." "I told her you'd been working on it for probably two months or more."
And what is it they need? An update on the plug-ins?
Yeah, they need a renewed one.
The plug where they plug the...
They're old.
They're old and... Yeah, I called and then I called again. Is she involved with the...
I said, "I think she's on town board there."
Yeah.
She's at the community center meeting tonight, so she might need to know.
Well, good. So they've got some new people.
I think we called him three times, which is not unusual. It's a good thing.
Maybe we need to call a bit more further.
We need to call again tomorrow.
Candy cane. Thank you.
Okay. Have you heard anything about what he found out about the house over there that's had the same permit for five to six years?
So what do we need to do?
Well, he needs to give them that. He give them some guidelines to it. Sure, he needs to find out what they're doing, what they've done, if they need to renew the permit.
You need to find out what they got done?
Yeah, what they're planning on doing.
And planning?
Mm-hmm. And it needs to be renewed.
If they're gonna do anything. Renewed if they're gonna do anything.
Well, the reason, if I remember correctly, Kathy, correct when I'm wrong, remember the...
They were told they had to do something.
They was told that they had, because they had varnish ruined and now they added one that the owners had called to do. It's almost like they just paid the thirty bucks or seventy bucks for a permit and just be left alone with it.
Bank all fixed?
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if they did use the hose where it was. Will you say varnish ruined and now?
Yeah, remember that's why we sent him over there in the first place, right?
Well, yeah, and the porch, I can't remember the complete details, but yes, we sent him over there. And they were told they had to do something.
Oh, she knows how to do it. She has a much sooner idea.
Oh, it's kind of weird. We actually kept asking this angel here while I asked him. I've seen your text on the works. That's what it's abandoned. It wasn't intended for what the status was on that day. Maybe it'll come up in a quick. Darlene had some back orders sterile petri dishes. Do you know if they ever come in?
Petri dishes did come in. Petri dishes did come in. She's still right now in another thing that's going back over for months.
Only one of your copies there, because that's like a pretty complicated meeting.
Okay. We need to approve them.
I think they're into the back. What is your...
Approved.
They've submitted an approval in the last week.
No, I didn't. I said that we need to. I think you need to. I didn't holler at them.
I'd motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. If it hasn't been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes, I will forever say aye. All opposed, say aye. Thank you. Any citizens here? Police report, sewer plant operations. Tell us hand over what you know. I know you're not Darlene early.
I'm not. I'm over yonder. It's still, everything's in compliance and best to my knowledge, I think Darlene got the response back for the idea. Inspection.
In the last few days.
I think so.
That she's coming or...
No, she already came.
Oh, she's been here?
Oh, yes, she already came.
When was she here, Doug?
That I can answer.
I mean, within the last week or two?
No.
That was the eighth.
Oh, okay. Is she due again?
No, she just, she busted us open on the other end of it. Just let, yeah, give me. Things that she don't know nothing about, obviously.
So have we satisfied what she wanted?
No, well, I don't think so.
She was working on the response.
And I believe that the response is done.
I thought Darlene told me that she was almost done with it. And that was a week ago.
I know.
I saw Darlene last week. Last week I saw her was, and she was working on it then. And she, she won't come out and say she feels that she might be...
Nitpicking.
Oh, I think she is.
I agree. But like I said, Darlene would go that far. You had made a comment to her earlier when we talked a little bit about it, about requesting a new inspector. I think you request that through...
Her supervisor. She's gotta have somebody over there.
Don't we all?
Yeah, where is...
Requesting different inspector.
Oh, you're going to?
Well, I would like to talk to her supervisor about it and see if we need to request that and tell that person exactly how we feel of what's going wrong. It's kind of funny to me that over a year, we had a certified operator who signed in religiously and did what we paid him for, but at the same time, he never went out there and never got rid of anything. So that makes me lean towards maybe she is kind of nitpicking a little bit or showing her power maybe because of another... That would be a good question for her supervisor. And I'd like to, maybe if I can find out who that is, schedule a meeting with them, and you involved too. No worries. Need whatever necessary. But I don't want to think we should have to put up with that at all. Okay. Got all you got? So good. One question I had too. It's not flipped. It's not flipped yet.
Turned over.
Turned over.
I run the laundry. I kept it from the...
Well, pressure. That's good. I mean, I was just... Because I know it always hand, every year it hands. I don't blame you.
You took over. And just in time, huh?
Okay, facilities coordinator report. That's you.
My code is running.
Great. It sounded good. Motor sounded good.
Oh, it runs great.
Been using a lot too.
No hose leaks, no...
No, we do have a couple hoses on one cylinder that's, a couple hoses that are going to be replaced in the cylinder this week.
Isn't that kind of like routine maintenance?
It is. It's...
Even though new are quick. Four years old, it's pretty good shape.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
We've changed some hoses, about all of them, but...
There's like four, five of them left that haven't been changed.
And we just kind of maybe until get a new...
Oh, we know how to take them fixed.
Saw you trimming the trees along Water Street. I haven't had my little guy come who does from my driveway all the way down the stop sign. Gets all that stuff off the creek. I haven't had him come yet. Have you noticed the trees that are gonna, if we get a bad, right there along the edge of my property, oh, what a mess it's gonna be.
They look up at this one. What about the whole bank? It's slowly but surely sliding.
And that's ten years ago. At some point, it's gonna be road underneath that road and that road.
Road's just gonna slide right on down with it. You can already, when you drive along now...
We don't have the possibility ourselves to do it for huge.
Considerably now.
Doug, do they need taken out? The trees, or should we just wait to see what happens?
Wait to see what happens.
But we don't have the capability to. They're so big.
Yeah, well, getting on the other side of them to move them and we just...
I gotta wonder too, if we do that or we help ourselves. Obviously, we have issues with the creek and stuff instead.
There's Rick.
People supposed to take care of it, or we have to take care of it.
We're looking for you.
Oh.
We're trying to see your...
Did I call with you? Huh? I dropped the talking to the wife.
Oh, sorry.
No, I thought, no, wait, no, she just...
The signs and the signposts finally have come in. Matter of fact, they just came in today. Signposts, we were waiting by signpost, put that up, sign up.
Oh, I wondered, okay. We've got one up?
We got one up. We were waiting on posts.
Breakaway post.
We finally got one.
Good. And that's autistic child.
And then we got the signs to replace the ones that have been graffiti. They came in today too.
Any more since the graffiti and the fire?
I haven't. I haven't found anything.
Just them one signs that were. I tried cleaning them off with the stuff I got and it started dissolving everything.
Started. Yeah, now you can't resist it. Let's do it. Nope, it doesn't say stop us it yet. Okay, Bob's not here. Anything else, Doug? Facilities. I know you're working on this bank.
Working on the bank.
Exactly what are you doing out there?
Extending that bank out. Think of the erosion that's happening in the driveway.
And you're gonna put riprap on it?
Put riprap on the side, on the outside of the bank to keep it from washing out then.
Now, do you have to put stakes or mesh down in there?
Riprap. Lock itself in there and hold it. Getting the, probably next week, William's gonna pour the form that he made for up there on Maple. So we get that poured so we can get the back hose up and living again. Cut that out and fix it so that's gonna be the... For the manager's house.
You say the frame that you built?
Yeah, he's getting ready to pour it for the collection box.
Okay, for a collection box.
Okay, anybody got anything else for Doug? We'll move on to the police report. Oh, we didn't approve the minutes, did we?
Yeah, you know the minutes where are you going to make the motion if you need or not it is necessary.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We approved Doug's verbal report and Darlene's verbal report motion. Approved is made. Seconded. All will forever say aye. All opposed, say aye. Thank you.
The round car we got done into the fire department, radar got removed, so I think we took out more lights. Doug helped me kind of gut things out, so it worked out kind of good. We just took all the stuff out. Doug's gonna finish taking out, taking off either the red or the blue, which is better, how they want to do it. I think you want to keep the red, ain't you?
Nothing we can use.
I took out anything that I thought that had some value to it. The tiles of registration arrived for both the vehicles. Anita's got them. I got some basic lights and a siren that was all donated from state surplus. We had that. So I did have to buy a controller box, you know, for like the switching. Had to buy that there at Safety Systems. Scott Blunt, I bought that and then we've done the wiring ourselves. Go look at the 2011 Avenger, use that for training and other functions. At some point, talking with Anita, she's trying to get a copy of the, what do you call it?
Take home policy.
Yeah, take home policy. So we'll get one in habit either for August or September. I don't see it being us.
I think we need Adam in on that because he can get very narrow.
Right, so we're gonna try to find like Hagerstown or Sibyl or someone that's got one and just kind of copy it.
We can, otherwise we gotta get Adam.
But no hurry for it because I'm still getting the car together, the doc, so I got the radio program, just gotta get it back and get it put in. It's gonna be a month or two, so we're in no hurry for it.
Is that why the one car's not here very often?
Which one?
There's one covered and one not.
Yeah, the one that's not covered has been getting stuff done to it, like the lights. The window's got tinted today, so it's been...
I didn't know if it was in the whole barn or if it was just on the...
No, just getting stuff to it little by little.
And we're keeping both of those cars? Is that correct? And I'm behind here.
Yeah, they will. Goal is to get rid of the white car. Either donate to another department or just outright sell it.
About the brown one?
Brown's already donated.
They're paid to work here for them right now.
We have to have... Sam is gone.
We have to have a...
Resolutions, yeah. Man, he already took the brown car to get it kind of out of the way because it was in the way just parked there.
So you know that it's $2,000 a year for those two new cars and insurance, right? You've been told, okay.
Yeah, we discussed it.
All right, making sure.
Yeah, $2,000.
Yeah, so we want to get, we want to get the white car going as soon as possible.
Yes, please. How are you gonna sell that, Rick?
Like we've done in the past. If we can't find a small department that can use it, that can use it like it was gave to us.
Then we gotta, depot public.
Yeah, can take the lights off and then sell it.
Oh, it won't still be a police car. We can even sell it to an individual?
Yeah. I'm sure like Doug or one of his relatives might be able to use it. It's that gray one they bought five years ago.
It would be nice if we could pay it forward to another place.
Say yeah.
Honestly, it'd be nice.
Have you seen that? Okay.
I didn't hear you.
We can't hear you.
It would be nice to pay it forward to another police department.
Okay, thank you.
That's why you can't hear me.
Yes. I totally agree, Brenda. If we can find an agency somewhere that can use a fully marked police car, it's got all, pretty much, it's got the stuff in it, all they gotta do is put a person in it, that'd be great.
Or we could keep the white one and get rid of that little silver one that you was gonna drive back and forth on. It's already got everything on it.
See, buddy, that's why you're poor president.
That's right. I think outside would...
Gun...
Fireworks.
Fireworks. I had a couple complaints, you know, just prior to, prior to Fourth of July, but there was adults with the group of kids, but I walked out anyway. They were doing it out in time on the side of the road there. It wasn't really causing a problem. They got out of the way when traffic came by. And the radio that was donated, it's getting programmed. That's the guy from another police department that is programming the radio for it for no cause, so we're getting that now. There was one that came out of a police car, a state police car. Got a used computer mount and a printer to be installed in the charger. Charger has the windows tinted today. Went and picked it up. Kelly out of, not Kelly, Sean Kelly out of Hagerstown. He does it. And I mean, it looks real good. Hopefully, none of the other interiors will start to warp and we'll get that at some point. Just go to a junkyard in Richmond or wherever and just try to find a door panel, just swap it out and be done with it. It's kind of warped and kind of separating from the top where the guy parking his son, it looks like, so it's just... Issued some curfew warnings to some of the, to some of the girls that I was seeing out late at night. I haven't heard anymore. Talk about them girls being seen out late at night anymore, so hopefully it's...
And how did you know who it was, Rick?
What?
The girls.
Because you got people complaining, you got people that have cameras that, you know, like Walt Houston, they got cameras.
How were they responsive to that?
Parents, their kids do no wrong. I can tell you this, my mom didn't play that game. She knew I was up to, I was doing stuff wrong.
Street lights, you're moaning, you better be heading to the house.
Yeah. We had to be in yelling distance. That was our rule. It'd be yelling distance.
We had to be within whistle distance, then my dad could blow a whistle through his teeth like you wouldn't believe.
And you didn't answer the first time.
And then we had a vehicle, vehicle fires behind the fire station and the state fire marshal that was investigating that, so...
Do we have any clues on that yet?
No, not really. We're still going through different avenues of checking things, so...
And what is the policy on these dogs running loose? How many warnings do they get and when do they get fined?
Well, which dog running loose now?
Not now.
Oh, well, usually when I go talk to them, that's their first encounter with me. So if people see dogs and they never, they never, like, you'll call me, but somebody else won't call me. They'll just, they let it run loose and it runs loose and runs loose and runs loose. And then after about the tenth time, then they're calling you or calling Buddy or Rick.
Well, when I see a dog charging somebody on the other side of the street, somebody's gonna get hurt of the older people.
That's why I would recommend anyone to call 911 when you got dog is charging a person. Most, some older people carry guns with them.
So are they ever fined by us?
If they do not, if the same dog continues.
And here's the other thing. How do we know they've had their shots?
I ask them and they ask them to show proof. Typically, I only do that when the dogs are aggressive. Nice friendly dogs don't really get on my radar.
And who was the owner you spoke to? A male or a female?
For which? The white dog?
Yeah.
That girl.
Oh, she was there?
No, I called her on the phone. I went to Josh's house next door and got her phone number and called her. She was on her way. She just got off work, was on her way home. I said, "She's got a cable strung up, like a leader, a big log between trees." And I said, "You're gonna have to figure something where the dogs ain't getting wrapped around these trees."
Oh, they get down to about five feet. But the one still runs loose 24/7. It's never been hooked up.
That would be the female dog.
That's correct. That one is never.
Is there a puffing dog over there too?
Is she out of the yard though, is the question?
Occasionally.
Because I stopped and talked to the neighbor that day and they said that the male dog, that's usually chained up, he's the one that will get up and he's, he'll be everywhere. They said that the female dog, they never see leave the yard. I said, "Okay, that's fine." I mean, she seems a lot more relaxed than the male dog. They're friendly dog. Both of them are friendly dogs.
The next step is winter coming shelter.
Well, because if I went there, both dogs were under the house.
I think they've been in that barn too.
Oh, I wondered. We saw her hook them up front.
Yeah, there's like that lattice and they're inside, like under the porch or whatever. That's where I seen them. These are big dogs. They weigh, I don't know, probably 120.
Well, the female's in terrible shape though. She's so crippled.
Crippled.
Oh, yeah. You should see her getting up and down.
Where?
It's her hips.
Oh, it was, it's a big dog. That's the problem you're gonna have with big dogs, like German Shepherd. I don't know. They look like they're park wolf. But they're not though. They're a breed of dog.
Are they long-haired, shepherds or are they...
I don't know about shepherds, but they're looking, I don't know, but they're big. That's, yeah, I had to guess.
What did you say, Rick?
Something similar to that.
The ones that chase the cows and everything safe.
Well, that's the, what's this guy out here, the llama place, what's theirs called?
Yeah, they are the...
Got the call.
Big white dog.
But just always tell people, if they think a dog is vicious, they need to dial 911. If it's just a dog running loose, not causing a problem, they need to call my, call my office in there and leave a voicemail. So that way I at least know, hey, when I come on duty, you know, because, yeah. Because she's gonna start, you know, she's gonna start accumulating tickets and she's not gonna leave her dog loose. I mean, her dog is left loose like that and she continues to run loose.
Great period of life. Great period.
Pyrenees, that's right. But I don't, I don't...
They're big dogs. They're just big.
I haven't seen them before.
They're both the same breed, it looks like. Our ordinance covers...
Kind of final men.
Yeah, yeah.
All that setup there.
But I mean, since I went and talked to them, you haven't seen the dog off the property, have you? Okay?
The male, no.
The one that's chained up?
The one that's chained up, no.
Well, if he, I mean, if he, if either one of them's getting loose, that's still a problem, but.
Well, one was.
The other one.
Came toward me this morning, but he did come all the way over to the front of my garage where I was getting in my car. But he was, seen somebody out there with a barker that come that way and I just pointed at him like, huh, they stopped.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
That was the female.
And that's the thing.
That was the female.
The thing is, the way our ordinance raises that, they can't be running loose. If they're out, they gotta be on a chain, a leash or something, maybe fifteen feet, correct?
Yeah, well, their leash is more than fifteen foot.
Yeah, but if they're not.
Well, it may start out at fifteen, by the middle of the morning it's down to five, if they get.
Because they're wrapped, because they're getting wrapped. But you, but definitely, definitely, you know, if you guys see something, you guys will be sending me a text saying, hey.
I just don't want anybody to get hurt.
Right, but I've talked to all, I've talked, I've talked to people across the street, obviously Josh, and their story was that it's almost always the male that you see out doing his thing. Whenever he gets loose, he breaks free, because you can tell that, that leash contraption has been broken in numerous spots. They just kind of tie it together and it needs like a.
And she picked these dogs up down at McDonald's at Christmas time when it got so cold.
Well, they're all in the right place, but if you can't afford dogs like that to, to maintain them right, you probably shouldn't keep them.
They're not vicious anymore.
The male can't be.
You don't know until it, you won't know if, what Kathy's saying is that if one wants to charge to somebody, you won't know it's vicious till they make the contact.
And them dogs, I said, them dogs will run you over if there was a.
Big dog.
But. Yeah, if they start, you know, if they ever get a call where they're, they're actually being vicious towards someone. If I'm on duty, I don't do how, how the sheriff's department does it. Them dogs get confiscated. They'll be in the kennel and we'll be calling and making arrangements for them.
Well, a lot of times when you find somebody.
When they're vicious.
When you find somebody, they're gonna come back and be, try a little bit harder.
Yeah.
Here, and all the shelters in Richmond are still full, correct? The last week.
Last time you were in Henry, they had somebody from Henry County come and pick them up.
I did get a call one time at the, at home and, uh, a lady said, uh, she saw a dog running loose and she wanted, uh, wanted to know if we could pick it up. And this was like on a Friday. And I said, what you need to understand, if we pick up a dog, we will put it in there and we will go out on social media, say we've got this dog, it's yours, please come get it. We make sure it's got food and water. I said, but the next Monday, we're gonna call the dog catcher people. They're gonna take that dog to Newcastle and, and whatever length of time Newcastle keeps them, they're gonna keep them and they're gonna put that dog down.
I know, that's why.
There are kill shelters. And she said, oh, I don't want anything to happen to it. I said, then buy it a toy and.
Then get your animals fainted and neutered.
Okay, Mr. Barker.
Yeah.
Who, Barker?
Bob Barker.
Oh, Barker.
He probably said that for thirty years, didn't he?
Yeah, he did.
So that's, that's, uh, um, pretty much just over. Now, Saturday I've got, uh, I got stop sticks training. So you don't know what stop sticks are.
I do.
The state trooper got killed last week up in Indianapolis on the west side. He was using stop stick, but he was not using the appropriate way. He was trying to run up and throw, throw the stop sticks in front of the car. You don't do that. You get way in front of the car and you throw it across the road and then you drag it back in front of it. You don't, you, you never put yourself out into traffic. This, this is a classic case where he was just wanting to get in front of that car so bad to get it stopped, but.
Well, and another officer was just killed. He had prisoner in the car and choked him to death with this.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm still wondering about that. Why would a sheriff's department send a suspected murderer to a, a doctor's appointment and only send one guard?
Well, he's got him in a patrol car. How come he doesn't have a screen?
It was a van, it was a van he was in.
Means he was shackled.
He should have been shackled. I'm not, I don't know what happened. He should have been shackled on the sides.
But you should have had two guards. You don't, you, you, you get a guy in for murder, he has nothing to loot. Well, I guess now they're, they're gonna go with the death penalty if they, if they get a conviction which they will. But that, that means twenty years later, well.
With the female officer, was she killed or just injured this week on a domestic?
No, she was killed up in Kell City.
Yeah, Kell City.
Yeah, she got shot, so it's just, it's not been a good week for law enforcement. But, uh, got trained, tra- training, you know, I haven't done training probably like almost twenty years on stop sticks. When they first came out, we had, had trainings left. That's what, I guess, you know, we don't really use them here in Greens Fork. But there's a certain, on how you apply it, how you throw it, when you, when you, when you use them, you don't use them on motorcycles.
Do you have them?
Do we have stop sticks?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I've had, I've, they've been in the, the truck forever.
Okay. You never know, these one comes in town, not me.
Yeah, so, other than that, though.
Anybody got any more questions for Rick? Make a motion, we accept Rick's police report.
Second. Will this be made proper second to accept Rick's police report? All the favor say aye. Aye. All opposed says aye. Thank you, Rick. Nita, sewer utility monthly income in this purpose.
We did get our sewerling settlement from Wayne County.
Wasn't very much, was it?
Well, it was only for twelve sewerlings. We don't have a lot like we used to. Right now, uh, we have got, uh, let's see how many to go through Wayne County. We only have twenty-four outstanding ones now. We, uh, we paid through the Wayne County Treasury Department. And this twenty, six hundred and forty-one dollars represents twelve that was paid in full and two portions. So our treasure has twelve to release. Seems like the same ones that get one have one released. It's, um, it's been going on for a long time. But at one point we did have, uh, over a hundred sewerlings. And thank goodness now we're down to one fourth of that. We're very fortunate, I think, to have all those out there. Um, we still have overdue trash, uh, and overdue sewer. I do have customers that's paid ahead. Some people like to pay three months ahead and I'll be bothered every month with it. But then there's some, it's hard to give a nickel out of them. Um, we have spent a little bit more than what, uh, we've taken there. We had insurance, uh, to pay out, uh, last month. That's what took us down. Our insurance was like, uh, like seven thousand dollars or something. We had to come out of the sewer again. So that's what, uh, now seventy-one hundred and change come out. That's what, uh, done it to us last, last month was the insurance, which I consider we do not.
You are insured for it.
Yes, we are, yeah. Right. And the sooner we get rid of those two cars, the better I will grow. So I was adding more insurance there. That's all I got.
Make a motion, we accept Nita's, uh, report. Motion been made proper second, uh, to accept a report. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed says aye.
Hey now, here is a street report. Uh, I didn't make copies of it.
Don't need to.
So, uh.
Just pass it on.
I'll pass it on to Buddy Reed or somebody to read.
Go ahead, Karen.
Shepherd.
But the boys have been busy, I think, with dogs going on out here with this bank. And they're getting ready to do some roofing out of the sewer plant. Uh?
Run for me.
Yeah, backhoe parts, you said, but we're grateful for the backhoe guys.
I'll then watch you have it then.
Left station log book. Yeah, they got that up tight. Sprayed weeds on town property, worked on water line for tanker fill. Is that up and running and everything's good and?
Oh, that's where it broke over here.
Yes.
Okay.
Test sample to Muncie for the water.
No, for the sludge. We couldn't, we couldn't get cut. Approved for Randolph Farms because Kent House literally sold his business as far as the deep watering box. So because it was a new business, we had to retest for Randolph Farms. Uh, we're still gonna test for heavy waters and so we have to get samples up to Muncie and have that tested.
Who bought it?
Um, I think it was his daughter.
Oh.
Son-in-law, somebody. The one, the son-in-law took the porta potty and I think the daughter took the dumpsters.
I'm sure.
Or one way or the other. I don't remember how.
Okay, the weed eater south man along the curb. Excuse me?
That's on copy, I've got to please.
Oh, oh. Well, I wrote a couple things on it. Says picked up weed eater head, minorage for grain pipe. Do you know what that money's worth?
Uh, they had that, they had, they, they, they had the weed. I do know what that was.
Spray weeds, spray weeds. Low lift stations, got limbs and alley between main and green. Power washed the office, power washed inside fuel shed. Picked up ground clear, these hardware or something. And this got brought up. I noticed the dog cans need pressure water to break down up here. They're not real bad like they were. I appreciate that. Cut limbs, mowed grass at the plant. This is where. Picked up rubber crossing. Picked up paint for the rubber crossing. Good road. Yeah, that's what I'm guessing. Trim work and fuel shed cleaned up. After dug. I wonder what that was. Cleaned up after dug. Now you don't know where anything's at if they cleaned it up.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
Okay, Doug, you're too old with them, man.
An old oil to burn pit pile. Filled grass. Picked up starter for tobacco. Helped Doug with backhoe. Looks like they've been doing the regular business, plus what any, any extra that you've had them doing. Uh, fixed pipe.
You're going there.
Something's up.
I got it. Not colder.
Warmer. God, this is getting cold.
Working shop. In a round building. Helped split backhoe, went to advance parts for flywheel parts. Three loads of limbs from down to the plant. Load filled at the plant. Load this lot over here. Of course, those are gonna get load, load once a week anyway, so. Gilmonds for plywood, then plant. Oh, the build, building that frame for Maple Street. Anybody got any questions about the, uh?
Hours.
Street department.
Oh, I can see it when we do the ones.
Yep. I'll make a motion, we accept that report that was turned in.
A second.
Verbal report, I mean. Motion been made proper second to accept the report. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed says aye. Thank you. Storm drain at Maple Street, we just talked about that. We got the wood to make the frame.
Frame's already made. We just got it poured.
We have any idea when we'll be able to do that pretty soon? And the roof out there, the plant is too good.
The roof, now that tobacco is fixed, uh, it will assist in putting changes up there.
That's great. That's when the blessing goes.
And artistic signs for East Pearl are in, you'll get them up. There's, one's already up.
One's already up, yeah.
Get the other, I'd like to stay first on the, as soon as possible to, to be quick and easy. New business, ordinance two, twenty twenty-three, establishing opioid fund restricted.
Yeah, we have, we haven't received it yet, but according to the letter that you got from, uh, Wayne County, we would be receiving some restricted. It was such a low amount, they'd have to go through the county, they'd need to distribute it to us. So we do need an ordinance for it and, uh.
How much money we looking at?
Six, seven, seven dollars.
Oh, is that all?
Six fifty-seven now.
Well, but that's one of, and there's gonna be eighteen payments over fourteen years or so.
Yeah, let's see.
Spend it on one place.
I tow of thirteen hundred and thirty-two dollars over eighteen years is the unrestricted.
Hundred and thirty-two.
Can, buddy, please.
Thirteen hundred and thirty-two dollars over eighteen years.
We just got half of it.
No, this, this is restricted here. It's six hundred and fifty-seven.
Five bucks a year.
Yeah.
You wanna read it?
Paper's gonna cost you.
You take note from the check and the.
Ordinance two, twenty-three, establishing opioid fund restricted. Now, Greens Fork finds it necessary to set up a separate fund to properly account for the pending receipt of certain funds as participating, as a participating political subdivision from a national settlement, Johnson and Johnson, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health and McKiss, McKesson, relating to opioid prescriptions and addiction. And whereas the statute on the opioid litigation and settlements can be found in Indiana Code four, six, fifteen. These funds are settlement funds paid to the state from pharmaceutical companies and should not be confused with federal or state grants. And whereas the fund shall be maintained in a fund that has been created with the following number and name, twenty-two fifty-seven opioid settlement restricted. Whereas this fund shall be used for treatment, education, and prevention programs for opioid use disorder and any co-occurring substance use disorder or mental health issues shall monitor the use of these funds and provide an annual report to the Office of the Secretary of Family and Social Services, not later than a date determined by the Office of the Secretary of Family and Social Services, all of which is passed, adopted, and approved by the Town Council of Greens Fork, Indiana on this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty-three. I put that in there. I had to live that. Do we need to put that in the form of a motion or is that just a?
Um, you need a motion to approve that, yes.
I'll make a motion that we do approve it and then we, we're signing it. It'd be a, it's the only thing we ought to do.
And here, if you wanna look at the, uh, IC on that. I got your. And you knew that second to that.
Oh, didn't you second it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion been made proper seconded. All the favor say aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Two, three, and eight seconds.
And we're gonna need a resolution one, twenty twenty-three, to transfer the law enforcement vehicle or the brown vehicle?
The brown.
Okay.
The brown vehicle.
Cause of fire department.
And also, I went ahead and done one for the fire department, seconded two.
For Becky Cool.
Here is the one for you guys to sign. You want to leave that other one signed, that will go to the fire department, it'll give you. And we have to have it back, we have to have a copy of it, okay? And then we have the original, we need a copy.
Resolution one twenty twenty-three, I'm not going to read it word for word. It's basically saying that brown car that we have received from Wayne County, how many years have we had that? Just by the time they say, they're doing this thing? Did I have hair in that picture that much?
Probably got that in twelve to thirteen.
It's been a while.
We built, yeah. Five or six years at least, right?
More than that.
At least.
I've got a Tom Reaper shirt on in that picture.
Yep.
So it's been before that because it was held.
So it's been probably close to ten years.
I think ten years.
Yeah.
Wow. So we got good use out of it and I'd like to think that Wayne County Commissioners and Sheriff's Department would be pleased to know that we did give it, donate it to another community entity that does good things. And basically this just starts the year, it was two thousand four, four-door sedan, VIN number. Like I say, we received it. It was good for a long time. We did have to put some money in it, last minute kind of thing, which is twice a doing business. So it went to a good home, hopefully they can use it and get as much use out of it as we did. So I'll make a motion, we accept this resolution that we gave that to the fire department.
A second.
Motion been made, properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say the same.
Um, we signed that resolution and we sent that out to the fire department. And they'll sign it and then we will use to get a copy of the bag. Were you?
Can you say? I probably can't.
That's what I was wondering, I don't know. He probably can't sign it, can he, because he's.
I see it's. Okay. Then make sure that, I'm sorry, make sure one of you guys has that to take to the meeting. Yeah, mainly.
This?
Yeah, that is the copy you guys accepted. So we're going to have to come up with it.
It'll be signed by them, at least Becky Cool put that on file.
Yeah, we have to have a copy of that.
What date do you want it dated?
It's already gone, so we better.
Be a date. I'm just asking what date you want on it, it's not a big deal.
All right, well, thanks for the data work on it.
It's got to go to the board anyway.
Yes, it's got to go to the board to sign.
Jan, Louie, and Becky have to sign anyways.
Hi, darling.
Hi, Dan.
Is this for that coffee?
Rico, Tokyo.
Uh-huh, yeah. I have a new quote.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause this one's expired. And it's actually a little bit cheaper than how we're paying thirty-eight or something, pounds, and this is thirty-two a change.
Are you talking monthly?
Yeah.
Just for a service agreement, maintain the printer?
Everything, yeah. It's for sixty months. And they're getting free toner with it, they get free service with it if something happens to them.
Free toner? Free toner?
Yeah.
Is it white?
I've been getting free toner with this.
Part of the, yeah.
That's hard to.
Pretty good. Is it a black and white color?
Yeah, now you pay for copies, which only run maybe six or seven dollars a month or something like that. And it's not a bad deal now, you say, you guys approve this quote and send it contract, you sign, you counsel to sign.
It's cheaper than the last five-year contract we approved that one.
Yeah. Yeah, it's cheaper than buying.
Well, I really missed that.
If it was five dollars more, I think we would still be.
Yeah. I think it's a good deal, so if you guys approve this quote.
Yes, yes it is.
Then I'll call her and she will announce the contract.
That we don't need to make a motion, do we need to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the quote that they have given us, which is five dollars cheaper, you say?
Thirty-two six fifty-six, yeah, and it was thirty-eight.
Thirty-two six fifty-six. Six bucks. Need a second, cheaper, second. Motion been made, properly seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say the same. Motion carried, thank you. Pick back up before we go to approval warrants. Just truly, you got any, any, any good words of wisdom from the sewer department?
Well, things are running very nicely. We had, well, Doug had to replace the chlorine pump. And we did some maintenance on the air handlers, bores, that Doug did. He changed the oil.
She helped. She can take out.
Did you have fun?
Oh, no. It was filthy. No.
We, we already have rugs out there?
Oh, oh, collapse. Who brings rugs to work? Let's see, anything else that, that's running, oh, well.
We had a chlorine line break.
Yes. We replaced the chlorine line. And de-watered about fifteen thousand gallons of.
Sludge.
From the digester.
So who picks that up now?
Highway thirty-eight dumpster is what they're called.
Oh, I seen him go by the house today, said highway thirty-eight, didn't know what it was.
Or did there was, if we had an issue with trying to get a dumpster down here at the main road station a bunch of years ago?
No. No, that was. Uh, Capitati Indianapolis.
There's a, I think there's a one that was called, that. They couldn't do it.
They brought it out here with semi instead of a wreck.
This dumpster they bring out there to de-water and the sludge, is it only used once for that de-watering? Or is it used more than once?
Oh, it's used all the time. It's got screens in it, they take it to landfill, dump it.
So how many dumps can we do before they have to come and get it?
Oh, it's full, it's waiting on them.
Ah, so is that three, four, what?
No, that's one.
Really?
Yes. Like she said, what was it, about fourteen thousand or more than that? Somewhere near.
Fourteen or fifteen.
Yeah, we run, we run fourteen thousand gallons, thousand gallons through it.
Wow.
And we send the water back to the plant and keep the sludge.
People just don't appreciate poop.
Well, you have to realize that when it goes into the box, it's only one point seven percent solids. So the majority of it is water, it goes back to the plant.
Right.
But how, do you have to have the box?
Two to three times a year.
Two to three times a year. That's a one-shot deal when you get.
Throw it up, send it out.
You go to a landfill?
Yeah, it goes up to Randolph Farms.
I didn't, I thought maybe farmers might have used it.
Do they spread it or do they bury it?
It's in the landfill, yep.
They probably use it for their methane, they, they were methane out there.
Could be.
Do you need cover it up when you get?
Is it stinky at this point? I didn't think it would be.
No, it really does, that plant doesn't have a foul odor to it at all.
Until it starts opening up and dumping.
No, it really doesn't have a foul odor to it.
I stood at the top of those stairs, it sure did.
You got a sense of nose.
Oh, do I ever.
They, we used to, I did the country of Germany. They had them walking sprayers and they sprayed the fields a human way, so they sprinkle under vehicles when you're driving down the road.
Oh, my God.
Just the way they did it over there.
It worked for them.
It worked for them, so yeah.
Okay, approval of warrants.
I've got a question, if I may.
Sure.
What is the status of Opal Lawson's property? And what are we going to do about all the stuff that's been left in that yard? It is a menagerie, she's gone.
I know, but it's been purchased and they're restoring it. There's a guy with a contractor license.
I've seen him down there.
They're down there about every day loading.
Just loading stuff up, another trailer load every day.
Yep. They've been dragging stuff out of the barns, like it looks like the yard's full. They're just dragging everything else, see what they got.
One yard body from the mall and then he is selling a contract to another person.
Whoever the guy is supposedly is a contractor. I don't know nothing else about it.
They're going to restore that house.
They said they're going to fix it.
They're going to restore it to a lot.
Yeah. They took everything out of it, made it full up like a house of cards, I don't know.
Maybe it's, let's hold it together so.
I was in it ten years ago, but I was still at the post office.
Wasn't both of them last year?
But I mean, that backyard is a menagerie, it is full.
Yeah, he's been, he or she has been taking stuff out.
I'm sure that barn's full.
To the ceiling, to the second floor ceiling.
So she was a hoarder.
That's, that's safe.
Safe word, then.
That's safe.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Is she in the central?
I heard she went over there.
Paying rent?
Paying rent.
Yeah, where Barker went. Where Biscuit went.
Biscuit's there.
So that's a retirement home for people in Greens Fork?
I think so.
And he goes to the assistance.
Centerville's a nice little community.
It is.
Doug?
Yes?
What's the Wayne County sales? Eleven sixty-two?
Probably a couple pieces of stuff.
And three hundred and fifty-six dollars also.
Can we pull the receipt?
No, I just wanted to know.
And then I'll talk to Ed, I know, I burnt grinder up.
What's my gang's hell? You burnt my grinder up?
That ominous place off of Tendons Road.
I burnt that one up and the, and the. I let the smoke out of both of them.
It's an awful world.
Would we pay Tommy phone with five hundred?
I feel they're looking.
Feel bad. Full of deep holes for those stumps.
Go down, I'm sure the girl rose and tore the stops. You're right, it's heavy, it was, you go around Eskers and stuff.
Yeah, we just put dirt in there, that place would have been seven there for the next ten years.
No, that's on SWAT.
So it's basketball with.
Don't tell Daddy.
Yeah, buddy, I think they, we're going to name a, name a road after you one day. Ted Struck or Buddy Struck?
Ted Struck.
It's going to be around about Buddy Struck. We're going to get the start of our team. There's both of us. Uh, for minute purposes. Camera's gone now, we are working with TJ's son, beginning of order.
Okay, I, I heard that it was, hadn't heard all of it, so.
What's his name?
Gordon.
Gordon?
Jordan.
Gordon.
Jordan.
Yeah. TJ's son, nice to meet you.
I don't know. You say his name is Gordon?
Jordan. She said Gordon, he said Jordan.
Brown?
Brown?
Michael Warden.
Yeah.
It's not right.
And then when he comes on, who's going to train him?
Between me and Becca.
Between you and Becca? And Darlene?
And then we'll get Darlene involved, once we get him on the weekend.
What's Becca doing, she's training?
She just helps, she helped train Cameron.
Ah, okay.
She's still considered like a part of the family, Doug gets in the bind and we've kind of never really released her.
She's still on her.
She said she would help if we needed her, so she's still a.
And she has.
She's still an employee.
Yep. It don't cost anything to have her as an employee unless she works, and she hasn't worked, so it's money well spent.
Do what?
Or not spent.
Or not spent, or you want to look at it.
Also good to keep her in tune with what's going on.
Excuse me?
It's good to keep her in tune with what's going on if she doesn't.
Yeah.
Now, is Jordan going to take the job?
As far as I know, yes, I haven't, I'm going to try to get with him tomorrow.
Okay, anybody have anything else they want to bring before the board before we adjourn the meeting?
Hallelujah.
Pardon me?
Cholera?
Hallelujah.
He said cholera, go bring some disease up. I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Motion been made, proper seconded, adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say say. Thank you.